The citizens of Heath, Texas are about to decide who will represent them on city council in place six and both the incumbent and challenger are here in the bunker because it's that time again, time for some straight talk. I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen and this is a special edition of The Bunker Bob Show. Greetings thrill seekers, music lovers, conversationalists from across the fruited plains of the great state of Texas. I am your host, Bunker Bob Steinhegen, bringing you an in-depth look at the two men running for Heath City Council, place six. I'm grateful to have you watching today on the bunker cam via rumble, YouTube or Facebook and welcome my podcast listeners who are out walking, driving in their cars, or wherever they're listening in via Spreaker, Spotify, Google Podcast, Apple Podcast, Deezer, iHeart Radio, Podchaser, or Podcast Attic, just to name a few. Well, this is the fifth election season that I have held these forums, which provides candidates the opportunity to put their best foot forward and is why, as I have always done, along with the invitation to participate, each candidate received a copy of the questions to help them decide if they want to participate, which also helps ensure that you'll only hear from serious candidates that are willing to answer hard questions. Now, rather than trying to cover countless questions that limit candidates to short form answers, I focus on 10, including one that allows each candidate to speak to issues that may go unaddressed, all without time constraints, so we can drill down on each issue. However, when a candidate goes especially long or meanders off topic, and sometimes they do, it'll be edited down for time while ensuring that the key points remain. Through the magic of video, the illusion that both candidates are in studio at the same time is created, even though each candidate sat down with me for a one-on-one interview, which is edited together to make it look like they're together. This is why I will ask follow-up questions of one candidate, but not the other, and why the candidates do not respond to one another's answers. In fact, the first time either candidate will have heard their opponent's responses will be at the time of this broadcast. Now, before we begin, I let each candidate know that they can re-answer or restate anything they say because the purpose of this forum is to allow them to be the best that they can be. Now, this is edited to alternate who speaks first and last on each question and to be determined who I begin with. I ask each candidate to pick a number between one and 100.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, and the number is 27.
Eight.
Eight. Number is 27. Not a bad, not a bad guess. And since Mitch Owen B came closest, I'll introduce him first. Over 30 years ago, Mitch moved to Rockwall County to manage emergency medical services for Rockwall County. He met his wife Sandra that same year and married soon after. They have three daughters, Madison, 30, Kennedy, 21, McKinley, 15, plus one, what I assume is a spoiled rotten granddaughter.
Without doubt.
Okay, Allison, who's eight years old. Congratulations. Girls are the best, aren't they?
All girls. So much patience because of them.
Oh, I'll bet that's true. Well, in 1996, Mitch was a principal in the formation of Rockwall County EMS, a small business designed to meet the specific needs of Rockwall County and its forecasted growth. Since the inception of Rockwall County EMS, Mitch and his company have been responsible for the lives of the people of Rockwall County, which has grown from 24,000 residents back in 1996 to roughly 140,000 people today. No doubt you have seen those, those ambulances and trucks driving around the county. They're hard to miss. For more than 10 years, Mitch has also served as a volunteer firefighter and EMS chief of the Rockwall Fire Department. In addition to his commitment to providing for the public safety of Rockwall County citizens, Mitch is actively involved in serving his community. Mitch is the president of the Rockwall County Republican Men's Club, vice chair of the Board of Managers at the J E R Chilton YMCA, programs chair for the Rockwall Noon Rotary, and a member of the Rockwall County Road Consortium. In 2022, Mitch helped establish Texas Valor Project, a nonprofit founded to raise awareness and funds for veterans and first responders suffering from traumatic brain injuries. Mitch and his family have been members of Lake Point Church since 2001. Mitch and Sandra moved to Heath in October of 2003 because of Heath's small town charm and knew that it would be a great community to raise their growing family. Mitch wants to utilize his years of experience in public service, community leadership, and relationships that he has developed in his more than 30 years serving Rockwall County to serve the people of Heath on the city council. Mitch, great to have you in the bunker today.
Great to be here. Thank you so much for the invite.
Yes, sir. You bet. Well, now let's meet Rich Kraus. Now, the incumbent was born and raised in Comick, Long Island, New York. He moved to Garland, Texas with his parents in 1978 at the age of 17, where he grew to love Texas and the opportunities it provided. In 1983, married, Rich married the love of his life, Heather, in where, where in 1995, they moved from Garland to Heath, which he considers the best decision he ever made. Rich enjoyed a 38-year career with L-3 Harris in Greenville, Texas, and its predecessor companies, working on various reconnaissance aircraft programs, including spy planes and even Air Force One. In September of 2022, he got the golden handshake. He accepted a generous voluntary retirement package, closing out a successful career. Rich's educational background includes an MBA in strategic leadership and a BS in human relations and business management from Amber University. Rich has been actively involved in community service for over 25 years, holding various leadership roles, including the Rockwall County Library Advisory Board, the City of Heath Park Board, and Leadership Rockwall Class of 2015, among others. He has also been involved with the Rockwall County Republican Men's Club and served nine years as precinct chair. So you're no longer a precinct chair?
No, I had to give that up to run for county commissioner.
Okay, yeah, I saw that you weren't and I, and I was surprised by that. So.
But I can be a city councilman and a precinct chair, but I couldn't go above that level.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Well, you sure were a good precinct chair while you were there. So, well, Rich was first elected to the Heath City Council in 2009, and he currently serves as mayor pro temp, which is the second time he's held that role. Rich and Heather moved to Heath to escape the bustle of Garland and raise their daughters in a quiet country town back when Heath had only 2,000 residents, which inspired his unwavering commitment to protect Heath's charm on the city council, where keeping Heath's unique character intact motivates his run for reelection. Through his actions, Rich has demonstrated his commitment to upholding and protecting Heath's comprehensive plan, town center overlay, and master park and trail plan, which preserves the open country feel with one acre lots, boutique restaurants, and unique shops that serve the community without increasing density. Rich's values of conservatism, minimal government, family values, and personal accountability are not just campaign slogans. They are proven by his track record on the council. Throughout his tenure, Rich has consistently stood up against developer-backed interests that compromise the lifestyle that Heath's citizens want protected. After 34 wonderful years of marriage, Rich's wife Heather died in 2017. Well, Rich has proudly has four generations of his family living in Heath, in addition to his two daughters, Renee and Ashley, who grew up in Heath. His father, Robert Kraus, moved here in 2003, where he enjoyed the remaining years of his life until his passing in 2019. Rich's daughter, Ashley, still resides in Heath and is actually managing his campaign, which is pretty cool. And she, she's also raising two of his favorite four native, and I put favorite, maybe they're not, but his four native Heath grandchildren. What a, what a blessing that must be. Rich, it is great to have you back on the show.
Thank you, Bob. I know this is a lot of work for you to schedule all these candidates. There's so many this time around.
Yeah, 12 races. Yeah.
It really, and I know this is just the beginning. All the editing that happens afterwards.
Yeah.
Kind of like, you know, I, people wonder why I do this for nothing. I'm glad you do this for nothing, too.
We're both a little crazy, isn't that right?
That's right.
Well, it's great to have you back.
I'm glad to be here. I really am.
Well, the first question is an easy one. Why are you running? Rich, why are you running for reelection?
I'm running for reelection again because I do want to fight to keep all the hard work that we've done, especially over, you know, since 2017, to get the ship straight, running right, you know, and fighting over development. And like I say, I'm as shocked as anyone to find out I'm the only incumbent running. You know, that's, I'm the one that should be running off in the sunset. I'd be tired two years ago.
Yeah, sure.
You know, fortunately, I do love our community. You know, I am passionate about it. One thing that really disturbs me, concerns me, is I continuously find drastic errors in our contracts, you know, that the city is signing. You know, just this last meeting, I saved us $20,000.
Wow.
And that's just that one meeting.
Yeah.
On the, the park contract for the Center Park, I had like six or eight revisions to that contract. You know, we have staff, we have legal, all these people supposed to, you know. So I'm not saying that should all be on me, but that's one thing that concerns me, that, that until we really have a stable council and staff, you know, that is ready to run this ship right and is not developer oriented, you know, that's when I would like to step off. But it would seem to me right now that I would just be cutting and running. It's not in me to just cut and run because things are going to get tough. But they're going to get tough.
Yeah. Well, you've been through this before, though. If I remember correctly, it was back in 17, I think, when, when the, when the developer, you had two factions, basically, a developer friendly and a, and one that wanted to maintain and preserve Heath's, Heath's comprehensive plan. Voters came out overwhelmingly and, and, and put people in that was going to, we're going to preserve that. Do you, do you see a shift going again? Is that what's happening here?
You know, it's funny, and, and, well, probably not funny, but, but true, and more and more citizens are noticing that, especially the ones that have been here a while. I'm, I'm worried about the new citizens that don't know the history.
Right.
But yeah, I was there for years getting my butt kicked, being the, the only naysayer, or you're, you know, you're wrong. And when the citizens decide, no, we're, we don't want to go this way, and they replace the whole council, you know, it was my voting record that saved me. They looked at that. That's, you know, Frank's new beginning in the foray, you know, they said, oh, no, we got to keep this guy. And they got rid of everybody, you know. And that's why I was still there because I was already doing what the citizens wanted. Again, I've never been a realtor. I've never been a developer. You know, I made spy planes in Greenville.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And did pretty well at it. So I, that's why I try to remind people, you know, I may seem bold and I'm hopefully not too abrasive, you know, but when you have nothing to gain, you have nothing to lose.
You know, that, that has been kind of the, I guess, the, the way people characterize, I don't know, President Trump sometimes. He's a little abrasive, just a little bit.
Right.
Yeah. So, you know, may not be a bad thing.
That's true. But I tell you, and what they realize, we're heading right down the same path. You know, we were already just one seat away from a developer or developer-oriented council in the last election.
Yeah.
We are that close.
Wow.
It's going to be very difficult to maintain that, you know, this time with, with, you know, me being the only incumbent running.
And three, three open seats.
Three open seats.
Yeah. All right. Very good. Mitch, how about you?
Well, in my three decades of being around commissioners' courts, city councils, I've seen functional and I've seen dysfunctional. 20 years I've seen Heath Council, you know, running like a top until maybe the last five, six years. It just seems like they've been ignoring some really big issues in the city and weren't communicative to the citizens. And so when you dig a little deeper, you find there's a lot of things that need to be done. We're eight plus years behind on a water plan for number one. And so those kinds of things got me involved more in the city at the city level, and it became apparent that someone needed to step up. So here I am.
Okay, very good. Though the race for city council is technically a nonpartisan one, which political party best reflects your values and why? Well, Mitch, I know the answer to this one. We've, we've, gosh, we've rubbed elbows at county conventions and at state conventions and, and you're also the, are you the president of the Rockwall Men's Club?
Yes, I started as secretary, two years as VP, and this is my second year as president.
Okay, very good. So, so why are you a Republican is basically the question?
Well, first vote, second term of Ronald Reagan, and haven't looked back.
Okay.
I've always believed in smaller government, get out of our way, let her, let us do our thing. I firmly believe in free market and the solutions that come from that, even at the city level. When you can outsource things, there are synergies and values that can be done with that. So really, let us be citizens. Let us have our freedoms. And so I think that's why I really embrace the Republican Party. Even though I am a staunch Republican and have been since I was able to vote and extremely active with the GOP and the Men's Club, obviously, this is a nonpartisan race. And so your job is to reflect all of the citizens' desires and needs. And we, as Bruce Beatty once mentioned about the county, not a county of minimums, I don't believe most Heath residents believe Heath is a, is a city of minimums either. And so there might be some things that I wouldn't want as, as a strong conservative, but that the city residents may want. And so I think you need to be sensitive to those types of things as well and, and participate in that to make the community great. A great example would be bringing in farmers markets. And again, back to that town center overlay, and I guess we haven't talked about that yet, so I can't go back to it.
Well, why wouldn't a conservative want farmers markets?
Exactly. Why wouldn't they? So you find ways to have co-ops and you find ways to, to aid people to come in and make that a nicer place that doesn't necessarily cost the, you know, cost us much money.
Okay.
You know, maybe cleaning up after, but usually conservatives police after themselves anyway.
Absolutely.
So we always leave it better than we, than we came, for sure.
That's for darn sure.
Right.
Very good. Well, you know, for both of you, I don't really have to ask this question now, do I? But what, the, the whole purpose of the question is really to kind of get your philosophy. Why are you a Republican?
Right, right. And you were saying, yes, I certainly am a Republican.
Yeah.
You know, and what's really cool, obviously, I didn't plan it, but I'm very proud of it. When I was 20, I was able to vote for my first presidency.
Wow.
You know, and we were living in Garland at the time because I'd been drug here from New York, you know. And I'm so proud. I voted for Ronald Reagan, you know, so I can, I can actually proudly say throughout all my life, he was the first president that I voted for. And again, you know, nine years as a Rockwall County precinct chair, you know, a very dedicated one. I think you could ask Sharon Hansen or, you know, Tim, any of those that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That I worked hard.
Yes, you did.
At that. And, you know, being financially conservative, my lifestyle is, is conservative. I don't, you know, waste my money. I don't pay extra interest. You know, my, my, you know, house is paid for, doesn't even, doesn't even not have a lien on it, but it's not paid for. It's paid for. And I was able to retire with that, like I say, 61 years old, got a package, started my 401k at 23 years old, you know. So that slow steady, you know, I'm not one of those guys that ever made like a really fantastic amount of money.
Yeah.
But I've made good money a long time, and I've managed it well. And I, and I took my own accountability of myself. And frankly, I think it also shows in a way I raised my children. You can tell I have two very independent children. And it makes you nervous sometimes. But you know, you can't raise a child to say, hey, think your own and do your own thing, but then do what I tell you to do.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? So, so I am truly Republican. I was, will be, sure. I'm not always happy with what some people say, but you know. And again, another cool thing is, you know, John Ratcliffe was the one that first signed me on the council.
Wow.
Swore me on the council. And look where he's gone.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I helped him run for mayor. I helped him run for Congress. You know, Heather and I went to DC for his inauguration.
Wow.
You know, and he actually pulled up one day and just said, hey, you guys have worked hard for me. I just want to take you to lunch. You know what I mean? That kind of stuff. So getting to meet people like that, and I know that's not your direct question, but community service, the biggest payback, people like you, John Ratcliffe, I have several people that I would not know if I wasn't. But yes, I am a conservative Republican, always have been, always will be.
Very good. Well, the next question is, what is your vision for the city of Heath? Rich?
You know, yeah, it's, it's great that you can be asked these questions in my position, you know, because I did help write the 2018 comprehensive plan.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So that was, and that was a big change. And one of the biggest changes.
Yeah. What was the big change about that?
Well, the, the biggest change in my opinion was, you know, these people were developing, you know, one home per acre, per acre. Well, the discriminatory, no, it's one home per developable acre. So what I mean is these people buying 10 acre plats.
Yeah.
Five of its flood plain.
Yeah.
They cram 10 acres in what's left.
Wow.
No, that's not how we're going to do it.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't exclude flood plain, doesn't exclude right away roads. And that's what really makes our density special, you know. And you can obviously make money at doing that still because people do. So.
Oh, yeah.
My vision is, is to have this high quality, low density, sustainable development with parks and trails continue through fruition. You know, because you mentioned in 2017 and takeover, we still haven't recovered from the high density stuff that was approved in multifamily. You know, people get mad with the water. We got to, you know, you can't build another house. These people got the right years ago, unfortunately, to do that. I don't want us to go back there because we're very close. You know, we are very close.
Well, and that brings me to a, a point that, that you wrote the comprehensive plan.
Well, I helped write it. I, I don't want to take this.
No, no, I, I apologize. But you helped write those comprehensive plan. You voted for this comprehensive plan.
Yes.
But even, even with a comprehensive plan, the, the lot sizes back when those developments were approved, the, the lot sizes weren't, weren't smaller back then. They were actually larger. So, so just because you have a comprehensive plan, just because you have all of these things, doesn't mean that the city council can't just create a variance and change it.
You know, I love that. That's what, you really do have the, you know, your finger on the pulse here because there's two things to that. None of that helps in a planned development.
Right.
Now you're back to a whole new negotiation.
Yes.
And that's what has happened in many. And it's funny because Ashley's the one who pointed out on Facebook, women, who writes those, who approves those? Your council. The ordinances, your council. Who enforces it? Your council. You know, who approves variances? Your council. And, and that's critical. You need to be careful who you have up there because they can say, and they have said, oh, we have a plan, we, nothing can happen. Well, let me tell you, you know, when I'm told you got to vote for the Toll Brothers, you're going to get sued recently.
Yes.
And, and you know, it's not the best development for the, you know. And what's really great too, is you have your constituents standing right in front of you and say, we don't want this. I know you're getting beat up for legal fees, which I'd love to talk about.
Yeah.
We don't care. We don't want this. You know, when I say, look, my constituents have told me that. There's the ones who hired me, you know, not legal council advice or mayor advice.
Yeah.
So I voted no, you know. And the important thing to that is we had some really passionate citizens, you know, the percentage, and I'm not sure the city was really all the way correct in this, but when you have a certain percentage, when you send the notices, unless you get so much objection, then it just takes the regular council.
Yeah.
But if you get above the 20%, I believe, objection, now it takes a super majority.
Hmm.
Well, we had citizens so passionate, they went around and got that 20% of objections submitted so that now they had no choice but to have super option.
A super majority.
Super majority.
And a super majority is what?
Well, super majority council means you have to have a super majority vote of, of the council. So if you have seven.
Yeah.
You have to have, what, five.
Five. Okay. Otherwise, you just need four?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I see.
And of those present, you know, if someone's.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
Someone's not.
That's a big issue.
And I could talk about that too, to walk out. We got lots we could talk about.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, obviously executive session stuff, I can't really, you know, discuss, but, but I can tell you, because I'm a, you know, pretty honest guy. It was unanimous vote against because those who wanted to vote for it knew it was political suicide to vote for it, once they knew it wasn't going to pass.
Yeah.
So in a lot of cases, you, you can't have your comprehensive plan, your ordinances, your rules, or even your laws and say, we're going to, we're going to abide by these unless you threaten to sue us, then forget it. You know, that's just, that's not how you run your city.
Right.
And, and developers learn that, you know. If they know that's what's going to happen, similar to terrorists, you know, who you, I know a lot about. So you have to stand up. You have, okay, if you're going to sue me, sue me. You know, trilogy suit us. You know a lot about that, right?
I do. I do.
And, and that's one thing that mayor was asking me about and all that, whether I voted to sue McLean and Chisholm, you know. But, you know, it's just, they sued us.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
You have to stand up.
Yeah.
You know, you have to stand up. They came back to the table. We're, we're working on an, an agreement that, that, you know, helps resolve the McLennan suit. A couple of citizens, well, you know, well, that was sued by them also.
Yes.
They sued our city.
Yes.
Sued our city council, sued our P and Z. You know, I, I got my third subpoena while I was in council chambers.
They sued me?
Yeah. Well, I wasn't good. I was going to leave it up to you.
No, they sued me. No, they sued me for defamation, a completely false accusation, completely frivolous lawsuit. They sued a, a woman who led the pack that was against them. They didn't, but they didn't sue her pack. They sued her personally. They didn't sue the Bunker Bob Show. They sued me personally. And what's interesting about that, just a little aside, is that they, they filed those two lawsuits, both are defamation lawsuits, one in Rockwall County, one in Dallas County on the same day. Now, why do you, even though we're neighbors, why on earth would they do that? Well, they didn't want the court to see what they were doing. They were basically violating my First Amendment right. That's all they were trying to do. So, yeah, that, which, which, you know, I, I thought we would talk about this later, but let's talk a little bit about this now because.
We can do this.
Because you've got, you've got, this is a, the trilogy development, for instance, is $850 million development. And so they've got tons of money. They, you know, if they spend 10, 20, 30 million dollars in, in legal fees, that's, that's jump change. It, it, it really puts a burden on cities.
A $10 million suit to the city of Heath is a big hickey. Yeah.
It's a big, well, and, and the city of Heath, you, you also have citizens that are part of that. You have nine or 10 homeowners association and citizens that are part of that lawsuit.
Right.
So it's not just the city of Heath.
Right.
So let's be very clear.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah.
That's right.
So, so the city of Heath is basically standing up for citizens, but it is costly. And so the question is, are you going to, so, so developers watch, and if you, if you lay down, all the developers say, there's a, put a big target on your back, don't they?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we had a previous mayor who sued us too. It was only 1 million, it seems.
Oh, is that right?
And he only sued the, yeah, Brian Barry. Why don't we just say that?
No, I did not know that.
Yeah, yeah. He sued the, the city and the council, I don't think. He went to down to P and Z level, but.
Wow.
And you know what? Then you, you eventually come to the table and you negotiate, you know. None of these so far have been settled by a judge or a jury. It's all been settled in negotiation and, you know.
Well, what's interesting is, we're still, going back to trilogy.
Sure.
Rockwall County is also suing Trilogy. And they have not withdrawn that, that suit. And so.
I was unaware of that.
You were not aware. Oh, yeah, they're.
The mud or Trilogy?
The mud.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, well, it's Trilogy's mud.
Okay, right, right.
It's one of the same, in my opinion. And I'm expressing my opinion here for the idiots out there who think I'm just making a statement of fact. But all, all that to say, yeah. So you, you're, you're getting criticized by.
Brutally.
Yeah, for, for actually standing up for the citizens.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah.
And, and those citizens are worth defending.
Yeah.
You know, their quality of life, their vision of the city. You know, they, they don't elect us to roll over.
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll, I think we might continue talking about this.
Okay.
Go, go deeper on some things. So, very good. Thank you for that. Mitch, how about you?
Well, the city of Heath is still exactly in essence the way that it was when I moved there, even though it's grown a few thousand homes. We really want it to be a premier lakeside neighborhood with very unique and special neighborhoods. We want excellent school systems and we want safety. And we have one of the safest communities. I believe PD was number seven in the state last year. So our DPS system does a very good job protecting us and, and our ambulance service does as well, I hope. Okay. So, so I would really appreciate the ability to continue that. Currently, we have a zone for plating FS43, SF43.
What does that mean?
Which means you have one home on one developable acre. And so that is very, very low density, very low density. We do have some quarter acre lots, half acre lots, but we feel like that's been enough of that type of development. And most of those are older neighborhoods and the vision's changed. So we're looking towards a very quaint downtown overlay, something that would be very inviting and people could go shop and spend the day and, and listen to music and, and have farmers markets and things of that nature. And so with that would mean any retail that wants to come in really needs to be very specific. It needs to be boutique. It needs to be something that the community wants. And hopefully we could turn that area into a destination. So people come to Heath and spend their money and then they leave. And then we could take advantage of that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mitch. Well, the next question is, how often do you attend city council meetings and what have you learned from that experience? Mitch?
Well, as I spoke earlier, I've seen functional and dysfunctional boards. And I've been 30 years. And uh I've been thirty years at the Commissioners Court Meetings, at city council meetings. I've been to a council meeting in every one of these towns. Very often, very often. And so obviously, as I enter the the scene in Heath, I've been uh present at at nearly one of, every single one of them. At nearly every single one of them, and uh we can always go back and review online as well. So uh very uh in tune with what our issues are today, very in tune with the dysfunction of our current council. We've had council members stand up, walk out to break quorum, so we couldn't get city business done. Uh, there's berating of one another on the on the council and all highly unacceptable. And uh so there to bear witness to that, and we needed some decorum. We need some decorum uh soon, so that we can get the city's business done.
So how do you feel about Donald Trump?
I I feel that Donald Trump has had uh extreme success this uh this session for sure. I think that he was, even he was maybe a little overwhelmed when he got to the swamp. I think that he uh let a lot of bad actors remain uh that became bad actors.
Well, you're right about that. What I what I mean by that is, I mean, uh, Donald Trump is is not someone who uh meets the standards.
Right.
So, I mean, a lot of conservatives like me, I love Donald Trump because he's a fighter, because he's willing to.
Right.
You know, uh, call a spade a spade, if you will, and and just just call out BS.
Right.
Do you do you have a problem with that or?
No, I I think you absolutely should defend your citizens. You should defend things that are that are wrong. You should call out things that are not true. Uh, you can just do it with a little more decorum.
All right. Well, uh, the next question uh is for Rich. What's been the biggest challenge for you in carrying out your duties as a member of city council?
Well, um, it it's kind of same line as before, before two thousand seventeen, you know, trying to do what's right uh with the citizens when you barely have a majority. You know, uh, to the point where if you have even one councilman vacant, uh, then then that's really problematic to try to get, you know, the right things done. Uh, we've had a pretty good turnover in staff, you know, there. Um, so you think you have problems resolved, you think you have a solution, and then staff changes and they don't know what you're talking about. And then you have to start all over again, you know, so that's, you know, kind of problematic. When you think about, you know, should I went in May, I'll be the only councilman with over years' experience on council.
Wow.
Including mayor.
Wow.
You know, yeah, and and if Jeremiah's statements hold true, he's a one-term mayor, so we would have a new mayor next year. Uh, the this, how would I put this? There's only two staff members that have over four years' experience in Heath that's there. So it's a constant learning curve, and Heath is unique, you know, when like hiring city managers, we have to say, look, this isn't grow, grow, grow. This isn't get everything you can here, you know.
And they don't like hearing that. Bureaucrats don't like hearing that you're not gonna grow government.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And and like I say, part of, part of the water I'm blamed for, you know, when I was first on council, we had a one-year contract with Rockwall for water.
For water, really?
For our city. I said, that's insane. We got, you know, so we got it, you know, got to five years, you know.
Yeah.
Well, and and I am, and I'm not even embarrassed. They call me the contract guru, you know, on council and staff. I mean, I've done this a long time.
Sure you have.
Big dollar stuff, important thing, you know, and uh so I keep asking, well, is this really our best deal, you know, to buy water from Rockwall? Yes, absolutely. North Texas won't let us be a member. Uh, and Rockwall's not not upping the water much in cost. It's the most, you know. So it's not like I was on my butt. I asked it several times. The staff we had at the time always says that was the answer, right? And then when we got in our hiccup here and we're trying to get our water stuff done, you know, and and I said, well, you know, have we, you know, have we asked um North Texas, can can we be direct? Oh, yeah, they said no. I said, oh, so they denied us? So what do you mean? Did they deny? No, we asked them. They said no. I said, you're kidding me. Well, you know, this is our water. This is a critical element of our city. We don't just say, oh, okay. So I insisted, we apply, we need to apply.
Because uh and 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 to get uh some voters caught up, uh being a direct customer, Rockwall is a direct customer with North Texas Municipal Water District. That's where they get the their water. And Heath has a contract where you get your water from the city of Rockwall.
Right, as well as McLennan Chisholm.
And McLennan Chisholm gets it from Rockwall as well. Yeah, so so your goal was to become a direct customer of North Texas Municipal Water District to circumvent Rockwall, okay? And and so then what happened?
Not not circumvent, but but try to get a better, stable source of our.
Just a direct.
Cause we have, we have had a very good relationship with Rockwall.
Sure, oh, absolutely.
Well, one here, oh, no, we just called them up. No, we're not taking customers. Oh, okay, you know, so no, we need to apply and get approved or rejected in writing.
I see.
You know what I mean?
So they had never done that?
No.
I see, interesting.
You know, and and that's why I maybe I sound, you know, sensitive. When you get blamed for like, hey, you guys ought to know, I'm the guy that's always beaten on the staff saying, are we doing this? Are we doing that? You know, when um and and that negotiates still somewhat going. That's when they said we had to go to eighty. We had to run a pipeline to eighty to get the water.
Okay.
You know what I mean? There there was some of the outcome of that, you know, and when the pump station broke on Rockwall, in Rockwall, pre Heath.
Yeah.
And you're talking, uh, you know, like months, not weeks and days, you know, for repair. And and I call them up and and it was Matt, whatever his name at the time, so so what are we doing, you know, to prevent this? So what I mean, no, we do our maintenance and all that. It's just uh, it's just an independent event, it's, you know. And I'm like, and I've done system maintenance on many aircraft, including Air Force One. You know, say, no, this is a symptom that you're not maintaining it right. You you don't have your, you know, preventative maintenance, right? Uh, and and you don't have parts provisioning. You should have parts available. This is our water. We have to have this stuff going. And they were push, bash, push, bash. It really made a mess. I said, look, would you like me to come down there and teach you the basic operations of system maintenance, you know, that kind of itself to them, you know? So I said, okay, well, show me the records. You you're probably right. Show me the records, you know. And that's when they admitted they had this stack of manuals for the different elements of that pump station, but they had no idea how to maintain it as a system.
Oh, wow.
You know, so we wound up paying Freeman Millican sixty thousand dollars to to create a maintenance program and parts provisioning, you know, and logic. You never heard anybody in any council meeting saying, you know, Rich made us do this, you know, or Rich forced us to do this. That's the kind of stuff that's frustrating. I am serving our citizens. I'm calling out our fellow council people. I'm calling out our staff, you know.
And I think, I I think what's important in in with a with a home rule, city that's home rule, the city council does not manage the 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 city.
Or can they?
You're a governing board essentially, and you are, you are governing the management arm, which is your city manager, city sta- secretary and tha- and that group. So uh ultimately, the city manager is where the where the buck falls, buck stops, and you're you're mo- most, most people don't understand that, the difference between a home rule and a and and a general law type city, for instance, yeah. So 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 you're, as far as governing goes, you're you're wanting to see policies in place, you're wanting to to put things so that, to to bring accountability to the staff?
Right.
Yeah. Very good, very good. Well, the one issue that concerns every citizen in Rockwall County is the exponential growth, which includes housing, commercial development, traffic congestion, and of course, growth in government, which means higher taxes. And is why we're going to tackle each in turn. So let's start with the explosive growth in housing like master planned communities or multifamily apartments and townhomes. Do you think the city is on the right track when approving these new developments? And are they contributing to or taking away from the lifestyles that the citizens of Heath desire? And why or why not? Rich, how would you answer this?
Well, and and kind of we said earlier, we have been on the right track since two thousand and seventeen. Before that, we were absolutely on the wrong track. You know, it was developers wanting to make money and helping each other and, you know, it was about money. Uh, and it's about influence. And you're saying you can have the the ordinances and comprehensive plan, but you get these planned developments, you know, that that I I don't think help, and that's, uh, and I'll mention this too, developers love newbies.
They do.
They want newbies, you know. When you say, hey, yeah, we need to do this, I already have forty lots sold, then you know, you have a track development. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Or, you know, or, and again, I voted against this particular building, you know, and I would, that you find little lines in there that says, you know, the density can fluctuate plus or minus ten percent. Well, there was no minus to it. You know, when they got to that, it was plus ten percent.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? So, and you're talking about the traffic.
Yeah.
It it's very hard um to get text dot to to catch up, no less keep up, you know, and these kind of things. And and that is my concern, that that as we, as our council is changing, and people maybe, you know, think, and I'm crying wolf, but this is real. People have seen it, and it's right in front, it's happening again, that we are going to be in danger, you know. Uh, it it was difficult uh even to um to get the Toll Brothers um development denied. Uh, the one before that.
Which I was surprised by, frankly. I I I couldn't believe that they pulled out. Yeah.
They didn't pull out.
Oh, they didn't pull it. They were, they were denied.
We were denied.
Yeah, that's, that that took uh took some.
And to date, we've not been sued, like I told, we were gonna do, you know, uh, but I did what my constituents wanted, you know.
Yeah.
The development before that was even worse. It's funny because our county commission was representing them, current county commission, you know, and we were gonna get sued. We were told right then, keep your notes, everything, we're, you know, and that that one was even worse, actually.
Yeah.
And and so let me remind you this, I also helped beat McCutcheon Farms, the McCutcheon property across, you know, right?
Yeah.
And let me remind you this, we have two other.
And how how many homes were they talking, proposing? Uh, do you do you recall that?
The McCutcheon Farm?
Yeah.
Oh, they were proposing a lot more than that. They wanted to be the new city center. They wanted, they had a little piece of the town center overlay that they want to expand for acres and then have very high density, you know, they wanted multi-use, they wanted Home Depot sized retail. Oh, it was, it was a mess.
Wow.
It was a mess.
Wow.
And then you you also have another hundred acres over by Medeville. And if 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 these three hundred acres get developed with high density, multifamily, uh, we're hosed.
Yeah.
You know, we're another forty. So we have to prevent that.
Great.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm not against development, high quality, low density, sustainable development.
Of course. Very good, Rich. Thank you. Mitch?
I believe the city of Heath has a pretty good track record with the density and growth. In twenty-three, we only approved twenty-three uh new permits. In twenty twenty-four, we only approved seventy. Uh, currently, we have roughly nine hundred plats. City of Fate, for example, has nine thousand.
Wow.
And it gets worse, the more east and north you go. And so
Wow.
I I think that we've done a good job with respect to that. Uh, we we don't have any multifamily. We have an ordinance against it. I think that's appropriate. It's not the type of uh, you know, a town that we want in Heath. And uh so I I fully support that. I I think that the congestion around us is going to impact us a great deal as well.
And we're gonna talk about traffic
Sure.
in a little bit, but I, so let's, let's focus on developments.
Sure. To me, they kind of go hand in hand. You need, you need to have all of that, but you said one in turn, so let's do that.
Okay.
So, you know, really, again, through your comprehensive plan, through your zoning, and uh very clear vision of what you want developers to do and and make those proper decisions when it comes time, when they come before council.
Yeah, do you think that uh the city is doing a good job of of requiring developers to pay for some of the infrastructure that uh is basically going to 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 have an impact
Right.
uh of their develop, uh from their development?
Right. I I think we have very high impact fees. I think we can go a step further and require them to do that rather than it be on our ownness, and I I think that's a good direction that we could move.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Well, study after study shows that tax incentives don't pay off in real economic gains, but that hasn't stopped municipalities from offering tax breaks or even using taxpayer dollars to fund infrastructure projects as a way to attract commercial development and certain businesses. Now, this, of course, puts government in the position of picking winners and losers on the backs of taxpayers. So where do you stand on this issue? And how should the city go about deciding when it's appropriate to use incentives like tax breaks or taxpayer-funded infrastructure projects to attract businesses and commercial development? Mitch?
So Heath does have an economic development corporation.
Yes.
And uh they have a decent amount of land in the reserve. We have exactly one building in that whole area. And they've been trying really hard to do their job over the last few years, and they just can't get any projects forward. So, you know, we own the land, we can replat.
What land are we talking about?
So again, it's the reserve, and so to be more specific, it's sort of behind the high school.
Okay.
Uh, if you come off of Lawrence, it's behind the Baptist church if you come off of Smurl.
And what about the land across from City Hall now?
Right, so
Right.
Really, they they own some land that abuts that as well.
Okay.
And uh the twenty acres that we just purp- uh just, the twenty acres that we just purchased, uh, known as the the Goat House,
Yes.
if you will, uh, is gonna be a really good uh addition to that. And so I I know the school district owns some land in that area. Maybe we could do some land swaps later, but where we had a a discussion ten years ago, uh again, with that Perry property, maybe, yeah, about ten years ago. Uh, they, the concern was, where's our downtown overlay gonna be? And it could have either been at that property, it could be around where City Hall is currently, or it could be at a third location, which would be between five forty-nine and five fifty as you look predominantly east. It's known as the McCutcheon Farm. And so all of those things were in play for a downtown overlay. Now that we clearly have a path forward, we have the reserve that abuts to twenty acres of other land that we own, and a new town center park coming in uh that should be online, you know, within a year and a year and a half, then it's pretty clear we have a downtown now, right? So what is it, what do we need it to look like? And so uh those incentives would be in the in the form of attracting the exact type, like we discussed earlier, boutique retail and uh potentially bring things to Heath that would, you know, would normally come, but that would be more on that destination end.
So it's coming from the economic development uh corporation, not necessarily the city, is that right?
Correct.
All right, very good. And and how do you, well, how do you feel about about cities investing in in businesses?
Well, again, I think we should third party anything that we can, and I think having an outside board that functions, has oversight, but has communications and connections to the city, I think is exactly the way to do it.
Very good. Thank you. Rich, how about you?
Well, I am not a fan of TIFs. It's funny you mention that, not 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 just having an MBA, but, you know, uh, I have that Leadership Fellow Certificate from TML.
Oh, yeah.
So I've I've had a lot of TML training. You know, council people just aren't born, and there's not really a degree in it.
I love it.
I think there should be training. And and in that training, you know, mentions the same thing. Now, if you're desperate, you've got a dying downtown, you know what I mean? And and you gotta try to get someone there because you're suffering. That may make sense, but certainly not in Heath. There's no way. But I'm very proud of what our EDC NBC has done, like with the reserve. You know, Hidden Creek, for instance, um, helping them get established, giving them a land lease for a few years, you know what I mean? And we've done infrastructure improvements there, but but remember that EDC NBC land is sales tax dollars. That's not your ad valorem tax dollars, you know what I mean? You're not directly taxing your citizens to do that. You're taking that money that's accumulated and creating environment, because, you know, we do not have the rooftops. We don't want to have the rooftops to to attract chains, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Kind of stores. Uh, we we are unique, and we try to unique boutique, you know, commercial retail. So so there, it it makes, it makes perfect sense. And then the, what, eighteen eighty, we're working on, you know, right now, it's gonna be a high-end restaurant.
Oh, wow.
You know, to go in there. I I think that is wonderful. And when you think about that, uh, in the end, um, with Hidden Creek, now, in that case, it doesn't bring us a lot of sales tax dollars because it's mostly serviced.
Yeah.
You know, like the restaurant will, you know, but we bought that seventy-five acres from, you know, the Rockwall Independent School District twenty-five years ago, you know, a long time ago.
Yeah.
Uh, not ashamed to say, we made a fortune on the land, you know what I mean? That was not a a Wallace leader there. We, you know, we had some money that we could afford to do, you know, some other things. Now, no, I think, uh, and, you know, I might get shot for this, you know, like standard service where uh, we gave them a half a million dollars, you know, to get that started, and they were only had to pay half of the back, right, you know? And then our mayor at the time became a partner, you know, in that development.
While he was mayor.
While he was mayor.
Oh, my goodness.
And and ex-fisheo on EDC NBC. That's the stuff we gotta worry about, you know, and and people, and especially if you start mixing it with LLCs, very hard to detect.
Yeah.
That's what they worry about. But as far as TIFs, you know, maybe I'll answer one of your questions so far today. I'm opposed to TIFs.
Very good. Excellent. Well, it seems like regardless of where you live, traffic congestion is getting progressively worse, which is beginning to have a real impact on the quality of life for many. What can the city do to improve this problem, or more specifically, what will you do as in your next term of office or as coun- council member, uh, to address the increased traffic congestion that's agonizing for so many? Rich?
Yeah, this is um repetitive, you know, you keep your density low. You know, one home with developable acre, you're gonna have much less density. You know, you have, you have multifamily. You know, we had an apartment building come up. You know, you have, you have multifamily. You know, we had an apartment building come up right across from City Hall recently, one of those HUD funded.
A proposal?
Proposal.
Oh, you're kidding?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah. And, and we voted against it, you know, and, and it's funny, like on Facebook, people say, I said, you know, here's coming, you better hope your council votes again. Everyone voted against. Well, I can show you the, the last one that came up was approved by the council at that time.
Oh, you're kidding?
Now, we, they didn't get the, the HUD money, but the city actually provided approval.
Oh, my goodness.
So I know.
This is pre- two thousand seventeen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so uh, it could happen. No, so we did not, and that's a point system. You know, so they didn't get that. So that's the key. You, you have to keep your density low. Uh, we, our, our roads are in bad shape. We've got a lot of work to do in our roads, you know.
Are city-owned roads?
City and text out, but city-owned roads. And, and the problem with that is, and people are frustrated, when you're, when you're building things like, you know, Heath Kaufman Yacht and whatnot, you know? Yeah, you could build a brand spanking new road down there and they're gonna tear it up. You know, there's not gonna be nothing left of that. So we've had to wait until the lion's share of, of the truck, of, of the destruction.
Gotcha.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Has occurred and then, then we'll prove it. So that's why we've got some, some catch-up to do.
Sure.
Um, but yeah, but to keep it low, you have to really have a, a laser focus, you know, on the comprehensive plan and enforce it. Uh, the other thing is you do have to stay on tax dot, text dot to make sure they're aware that you have issues, you know? It took us forever, but we've got two lights uh on seven forty down at Forneway. You know, there are Heath Kaufman Yacht and, and one more behind, beyond.
Yeah.
You know, to help.
Yeah.
Uh, I was trying to be convinced, you know, by the, the retired uh county commissioner that we needed to make that seven forty and eleven forty, Smurl, you know, four lanes to help traffic. And I was like, no way. I want to make it one lane. You know what I mean? Why would I make it easier for Kaufman and Fornie to come flying through Heath? That, that's not the answer. They need to fix their problem.
Yeah, that, that, that was, I, I guess, uh, one of the, uh, curiosity to me. It, it does seem like you guys are a pass-through.
Oh, are we ever?
Yeah, for a lot of these.
Are we ever?
Yeah.
You know, and believe me, I've been out there waving my sign campaigning for many, many days and hours, you know? And you can tell by the time of day when it's Fornie coming in, Fornie coming through, you know? It is, it's amazing. I mean, and, and if you had an apartment across from City Hall on top of that, Amy Park School, you know, Heath High, uh, it, it would be unrecalable.
So why is uh not widening it a, a better solution than, than, than keeping it narrow?
Two reasons. One, they caused the problem. You know, their Travis Ranch, their.
What do you mean they caused the problem?
They overdeveloped extraordinarily, Fornie. Uh, that's actually E T J, but even in Fornie, all the way to eighty, I don't know if you've driven to eighty lately, you know?
It's been a while.
It's, it's amazing. They are just right on top of each other. And the crimes are already becoming a problem, the value, you know? I mean, it, it's horrible. And most people use uh apps for their directions. And if you improve a route through your city, all those apps are gonna say, come through Heath. It's the easiest way to go.
Wow.
So you don't want to make it easier for them to come through Heath, you know? It's, it's sufficient for, for our citizenry in that area.
Yeah. All right. Well, very good. Well, Mitch, you are a member of the Rockwall County Road Consortium. So you actually have a little bit more insight than, than, than most would. What do you, how would you answer this?
Well, again, it really begins and ends with relationships. We, we talked about eight-dollar return on a dollar at the state level. And that happens because we have a, a very active road consortium that meets with uh consultant and text dot and North Texas Council of Governments. Every time we meet, we have them in the room and we talk about each of these projects and what's gonna take priority. They uh give information that helps shape potential road bonds like we had a couple of years ago, where that money would go and how those projects would be earmarked or they wouldn't. And so uh, I, I think that it begins with having those discussions. We, we have to have most of our roads, major roads in and out of Heath uh, larger in size to accommodate for that traffic. And those are all state roads. And so you have to have a good relationship with text dot who really kind of do what they want typically. So it takes a lot of work to have those uh relationships. And that road consortium has been going for quite a while and has been pretty effective in, in getting monies to our communities that, that others uh can't. And we do that through using our road bond money to uh really make those projects shovel-ready. So we do the engineering, we do things like that, so that when text thought has a project that's off schedule and now they've got twenty million dollars that they need to invest somewhere, they can look to Rockwall where they could get started right away. And so we get those projects over a neighboring city. And so that's really where it begins. So we, we should actively work on seven forty, Smurl, five forty-nine, five fifty, seven forty south slated to, to be redone. But you know, those projects, you're dealing with other counties as well. And so there's other things that complicate uh the process. But, but essentially, uh, you want to start a new road today, it's gonna be about ten years before you get it built. And so we're way behind on those relationships. And uh, you know, I, I think that th- that's where it begins and ends because it's the bulk of uh the roadways that we use and state, state roads.
Now, you are on the road consortium. Now, I know that every city gets one or two representatives on the road consortium. How are you on it?
As the emergency medical services chief.
Gotcha.
I was asked to uh be a part of it. Back when we were redoing thirty, uh, predominantly the overpasses out in Fate and Roy City.
Okay.
And so there was a lot of planning and the only way to really plan is to have the most accurate information. And so I was allowed to sit in on that board and, and participate. And then I would have firsthand knowledge of what projects were coming forward so that I could plan with uh EMS resources.
All right. President Trump initiated the Department of Government Efficiency, or DOGE, which not only uncovered outrageous waste in our federal government, but also exposed an entirely new generation to the reality best articulated by President Reagan, who said that government is not the solution to our problems. Government is the problem. So what is your philosophy about municipal government growth? And where do you draw the line between what constitutes an essential government service that warrants taxpayer funding and wasteful spending that should be prohibited? Mitch, how would you answer this one?
I absolutely believe in smaller government and I think Heath has done an excellent job with that regard. That we have seventy employees, thirty-six of which are on DPS. So it's really a skeleton crew and it, it's really been that way for a long time. And in fact, it's been impeding their ability to, to get out permits and certificates of occupancy and other things like that. And so uh, you know, as much as I hate to see government grow when it, when it affects the quality of life of someone who needs to get into their home uh through a CO uh, or get a, a water meter on their land, I think you shouldn't have to wait a year and a half or two years to get that.
Is that what's happening now?
I know someone who's been uh two years plus that's lived there and still doesn't have a CO.
And that's because the government has been dragging its feet?
Because we, we don't get those processed in uh City Hall, correct? So I think we could use a little help there. Certainly some efficiencies of other sorts, maybe not necessarily financially, but uh workflow and things of that nature perhaps. But, you know, our, our city staff is wonderful. They do a great job on so many levels. I think they need a little bit of help, not a little bit of cutting. And, and I think that uh with the proper culture, I think that's exactly what will happen. I think we've seen a movement in that direction since we've had a few council changes. And I think we'll see a whole lot more when we get some more change on council.
You know, when it comes to government, typically what, versus a private company, a private company, it, if it fails at something, it stops doing it. And it tries something else. Government's very, just the opposite. If, if it fails at something, it, the answer is, well, let's put more money into it. And being that, that, you know, the, the city council is in effect a governing board. You're not a managing, uh, you don't manage anything. The city manager does. Uh, how do you kind of ensure that the city manager, you know, uh, by nature is a bureaucrat who likes to have as many people under them as possible? How do you keep that under control?
I think it's intimate knowledge of the workings of the city. I think too many council members, they come to uh the meeting and they start reading their packet. And I think the work is, needs to be done before that. We get it several days ahead by our city secretary. And uh, you need to get to work that weekend and know uh what's coming up. And you need to have discussions with those departments. And if you see any inefficiencies, uh, you'll see them in those kinds of meetings. Again, relational.
Very good. Thank you. Rich?
Well, I'm, I'm, again, Reagan, that guy I voted for first and all that.
Your first guy, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I tend to agree. Uh, you know, government is intended to provide the health and safety of its citizens. You know, essentially the things that no citizen could, even if they could, they probably would not provide. You know, stop signs, streets, you know, good roads, you know, that's, that's what you need government for. And again, obviously, health and safety, you know, fire police, you know, those kind of things. So, so that should be the number one um, you know, goal of, of our government. Uh, a lot of people do want uh customer service, city services. Uh, they, especially in Heath, they may want extra things like open space, parks and trails. You know, so although I don't call them essential for the safety and healthy, but these people have spent a lot of money on their property. They've got big investment in it and I believe they deserve what they want. And, and if that's what, and we do our studies, you know, uh, we do our surveys and, and that's what the citizens want. So I, then I think that is uh acceptable. Uh, as you said, the unfortunate part about that is you have to maintain, you know, these amenities.
Yes.
You know, so, so it does hit to tax dollars a little bit, you know? Uh, what, what I don't agree with is, is growth for the sake of growth, uh, especially in government. Uh, I was just talking about that. We had a budget meeting yesterday, a first budget meeting, you know? And, and what you don't want is you don't want a bunch of employees that are just laying back saying, wow, this is great. This is easy, you know? What you don't want either is you don't want a bunch of employees with their hair on fire, uh, not doing a quality job because they're not properly staffed or supported. I do think, and again, in my management positions and whatever, you have to have some level of stress with your employees. You know what I mean? You have to have some sense of urgency.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, that's a tough combination, but, but, but that's where you, that's where you need to be. And, and that's where we need to be cautious. Because as you, your growth, especially do high-density growth, how much more police do you need? You know, fire, you know, road, you know, uh, ordinance enforcement, you know? I think that's one thing we do lack actually as well is, is enforcing ordinances. And watching these contractors and developers, are they really meeting ordinances? You know, I, I would support maybe a little more staff for that because we can't fix that if it's not done right, you know, initially. But, you know, I'm, I'm not one of those that think the bigger government, the better, you know? And, and it's uh, you know, me, Mr. Historian, I remember we used to, you know, go through all the potholes of City Hall. You know, parked by the Quotson Hut, you know? That, that held the lawnmowers.
Yeah.
Back there.
Wow.
And, and we had the uh, the card table and chairs, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That we sat, you know? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and at the time, I'm sure that was adequate.
Yeah.
There was two thousand people here back then, you know? So, so I get it. There's ten thousand people now. So, you know, g- g- growth is going to require more government. You know, if, if you want to be safe and secure, you know? And even, you know, state this, even the high school, you know, you ask our, our DPS, that's where most of their activity is, is at the high school.
Really?
Yes.
No, I didn't know that.
Yes, and some of that bleeds over there to Tom Tom.
Wow.
You know, so if you look at all of our reports, what have you done this month? That's where the lion's share of it is. And, and the, the more commercial, the more, if you want to put more shopping centers, you put that, you know? Uh, it doesn't just bring in dollars. It, it brings in cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that cost is that inevitable unfortunate government, you know, to help, keep, help your citizens healthy, safety and continue to have the lifestyle they want because we truly want to protect that.
Very good, very good. Well, property valuations have increased at such astronomical proportions that every city in Rockwall County has continually, continually lowered the municipal tax rate year after year while still increasing revenue. Under what circumstances would you support an increase to the city's tax rate? And would you support a tax increase for the next fiscal year? Well, Rich, what about you?
Well, you know, and, and that is a tough one. We've had some, some um real challenges.
Oh, yeah.
You know, in Heath with growth and all that, you know, and, and people, you know, may not realize that, you know, we've spent oh, man, sixty, eighty million on our, on our infrastructure, water, sewer, all that stuff you never see. It's not sexy. It's not pretty.
It's definitely not sexy.
But we've been doing that, you know, and like, you know, I'm, I'm trying not to divert from your question, but just like the water, you know? We developed and we designed and we built our water system to provide our community at build-out. You know, it was North Texas that didn't keep up with the massive growth, you know, in Rockwall.
Yeah.
So uh, growth should pay for growth. Citizens should have a stable tax rate that they can predict and live on so that they can stay for the lifetime, which is, which is what, you know, our charter, you know, desires. Uh, the unfortunate part is when you say tax, you know, what do you mean? You know, uh, our, I'll go back to our.
And I'm talking about tax rate.
Yes, tax rate. That's what I'm saying, tax rate. Yeah, yeah.
That's the thing you can control.
We can. Uh, again, we have the big issue of water, right? And I don't know if you're aware of this, but you know, uh, we found a better option rather than trying to run a water pipe all the way to eighty, is we can drill, baby drill, you know?
Drill your own well.
Wells.
Yeah.
Wells.
Okay.
You know, it gives, it gives us a secondary water source, you know, because of some control. That, that's gonna be a lot of money. And that's gonna be done through the utility fund, you know? So uh, inevitably, the same folks who are, you know, pretty upset about not having water are probably gonna be upset about what their water bill's gonna look like, you know, by the time we have a solution.
Yeah.
One thing I would be absolutely against would, would be raising both. You know what I mean? Because you can kind of say that, yes, we haven't raised.
Raising both what?
Both your ad valorem tax and your water rate to support the bond in the utility fund. I'm sorry, I should be clear.
No, that's fine.
Municipal finance is really unique.
It is.
You know, to, to what goes on in a city.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't believe in double dipping. If, if we uh got in some, some major pinch uh, that looked like uh we couldn't sustain our fund balance, which is critically important, you know? Um, the, I believe the state only requires twenty-five percent and we, we require thirty-five percent. That's what keeps our bonding so high.
Gotcha.
You know, so, a- and I know these are all different elements you'd have to look at. I'm never, I, I do not want to raise the taxes on our citizens. I want to take the growth money, which should pay for the additional policemen, additional firemen, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, and let them pay their part with the growth money and let our current citizens have a stable tax rate. And the reason I keep saying that, high-quality, low-density, sustainable development? Because where cities are hosed is when growth is done. When you're built out.
Yeah.
Now you don't have that growth.
No, you don't.
And, and if you've been spending the money like candy.
Yep.
You know?
That's right.
Now your citizens can't even afford to live in your city anymore, or your infrastructure goes to heck.
Yeah.
You know, it's funny, you know, back when David Sweet was, uh, he'll probably hate me for this, didn't he? Sweet was mayor. In fact, I probably memorized it was his sonatus.
He was mayor of, of Rockwall, not Heath.
Mayor of Rockwall, thank you. Yeah, yeah. We were talking and he said, yeah, you, you Heath guys who are living off the back of your, you know, your poor residents, you know? And I said, well, you know, look at, look at Rockwall. Uh, I'm, I'm sure your sales tax income completely multiple times covers the whole entire balance of Heath, right? Our budget.
Yeah.
Why do you even have property tax if you have that much sales tax?
Yeah.
So if sales taxes are the answer, it, it doesn't appear to me it works.
Right.
Because they still have the same or similar tax rate that we do. Most have higher tax rates.
Very good, very good. Mitch?
We spoke earlier about how far we are behind on infrastructure. We're eight-plus years on water. Uh, we're two and a half plus uh behind on road repair at the city level. We're six, eight years behind on those relationships with the state roads through text dot and North Texas Council of Government. So, you know, I, I think we're gonna have a lot of things to fix. And unfortunately, we've been running so lean for so long that I think uh we're probably gonna have to put out a bond to pay for some of the wells that we need to get water in. Uh, is bond the best way to do it? I don't know. That's why we have a financial director. We'll see what kind of mechanisms we can do. Let's see how many debt services are rolling off and what, how we can pair those so that we can balance our budget and not raise taxes. And uh, it, we just had our first budget workshop meeting the other day and I thought it was quite enlightening. And uh, so we'll see how that works through. Uh, it would not surprise me uh, if we were flat or maybe even a slight rise in the tax rate. But I think, again, our city's not a city of minimums. And I think our citizens deserve a little more and want a little more in certain areas. So it's up to us as citizens. We're the, the gateway to the community. So it's up to us to direct city staff on what the vision of their citizens is. We're just a mouthpiece.
Well, bond is different than, than raising the tax rate because the, the citizens, the voters get to decide whether or not they want to raise their tax rate.
Right.
I'm talking about uh raising it without, outside of a, a, a voter uh approval.
I'm talking about more debt service and what that looks like for the city, which does, you know, increase the budget. But so where would you pull from if you had to pay a mortgage on that, so to speak? So, you know, finding the most effective ways. I, I think we're, we need to be in a rebuilding era and I think that we need to expect to pay for a little bit of that. need to expect to pay for a little bit of that.
So, so uh do you, do you think that this next fiscal year you would, you would uh see a, an increase in the tax rate?
I think there's a chance that it could, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, wouldn't be the way that I would want it done, but we've been uh running at a deficit, running too lean, running in shock uh for quite awhile. We gotta recover.
Even, even though the, the, the appraisals of houses, you, you don't raise the tax rate at all and you're
Sure.
The, the city's still making a, a lot more money than it did. Why, why, why do you not, why do you think that that's not enough?
It, it might be. Again, we need to evaluate all that. We've had one meeting, wasn't even a member, I was in the audience. Uh so we'll see uh when we're in there, how much we can do, how much we can affect.
Very good. Thank you. Well, are there other issues that we haven't talked about that you plan to address if elected? Mitch?
Well, I, I would have to say that the number one uh ordinance I would like to see adjusted again would be that of a term limit. Uh we did get enough signatures, five hundred and fifty or so to get in the initiative on our last election. And it passed with eighty-two, eighty-three percent. And so obviously our citizens are very, very interested in that. I am running against the only incumbent. Uh he's been there sixteen years. And I think if there were plans or ideas uh that could have been effective over those years, we would have seen them. So I think we, it's time for some new blood. That term limit uh petition was for the idea of term limits and then the city council uh got to decide what the terms of that were. And so it, it wasn't retroactive, but it was, uh the clock starts now. And so my sixteen-year incumbent uh potentially could have twelve more.
So uh when, when you think about, when you talk about your incumbent, I mean, he has been kind of holding the line on against developers from building these small lot developments. What, what is different about the two of you um that, that kind of draws a distinction?
Well, I would, I would definitely say uh temperament and structure in the way that I want to perform government.
Okay.
I think that, that uh you need a very even keeled tempered person that can have grown up discussions without flying off the handle, uh getting up and breaking quorum. I think that you need someone who can go in and be a statesman, not a politician, someone that can go in and, and help mediate situations and get things moved forward, not uh breaking quorum and the city not getting business done.
Alright, very good. Rich?
Now we have this MyGov that we're just starting. I never heard of that, but it's kind of an MRP system for municipalities.
Okay.
It runs your purchasing and then your finance. That's going to be great. That's going to be a lot more visibility into what's going on. I think that will solve, you know, quite a few of our problems. I'm, I'm going to be making sure that that is thoroughly implemented with all the modules that are available. You know, because uh it, it has the capability to um join all of the different departments into one. You can determine whether developers are, are paying their due in a timely manner. You know, because obviously they can't pay it all at once. You can help track that. Reven had to have employees running around seeing, you know, what's going here and there.
Yeah.
Uh it can help you stabilize your finances. It can be predictive uh and accountability because as I said it again, you know, we um boy, I, I, I wish it wasn't this way, but we talk about all this and we talk about everywhere. He's got some problems. He's got some people that are making money off the development of, of our city. And, and, and I want to highlight that and I want to make it as difficult as possible for that to continue, not happen, but continue. Uh I also think that we have too many contractors running our city. We contract our legal, we contract our engineering. We contract, I guess what L P I O, public information. Uh I think our, our city should be run by employees and I think that MyGov, you know, will help.
You know, it's interesting, uh in, in business, the one thing you can control is uh, is employee cost. So uh that's, that is universally uh the case. It seems to me that um when you hire uh full-time people to, to fill positions that have a certain expertise as, as contractors where you you know, you, you hire a, a, a lack of a better term, a bureaucrat, that's how I see the government employees. And I know that offends people, I don't care. Um but, but when you, when you bring on new bureaucrats, are, are you really saving money? And, and why do you think that's a better solution than, than the contractors?
Right. And, and to me, it depends on what they're doing. If you want to pay someone to mow your parks, they're, they're, that's going to be a defined cost.
Okay.
You know, uh in municipalities, I don't feel we are controlling the cost of, of labor, you know, like I say, I voted against uh Aretha's last two contracts because they had too much raises. You know, it's like if, if a COLA didn't provide enough raises, now we're doing the study to show, you know, what a city manager should be, you know? So I don't agree with that. Yeah, it's just our assistant city manager makes a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year and I think that's insane.
Well, but, but, but you've lost a city manager uh because she's getting paid more somewhere else. I mean, it, it, it kind of goes to, to, to my, I, I'm not a fan of, of bureaucrats. So, so that's, obviously that's where I'm coming from. And, but, but it, how, how do you keep? I mean, if, is that the going rate for city managers? I mean, two fifty? I mean, it sounds like if that's an assistant city manager, I would imagine you'd have to pay two fifty, three hundred for a, for a city manager. Is that right?
I hope not. I hope not. Because when you look at the numbers, you look at our budget, you look at our population.
Yeah, I know. It's crazy. It's, it's insane that you would pay.
We're not that big. We, we don't. It's, it's not that exorbitant and it shouldn't be. You know, it's not like you're trying to uh run, you know, Duncanville or something or Dallas.
Yeah.
You know, so um what, well, what happened there is like I say, now the council, you know, they approve um like the merit raises and whatnot. They don't really say who gets what.
Oh yeah.
So, so uh it was.
Well, and I think you hire the city manager, right?
That's who's supposed to control that.
And the city manager does all the rest.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's one area you do have control over. Do you think that's why you're losing city manager, not paying them enough?
No, I, I don't. When, when we hired Aretha, um she lived in McKinney and she was in, near DC. So it was an opportunity for her to come back.
Okay.
Um a- as we mentioned, size and all that, when you think, you know, when you're playing this like a business uh for our size and, and our job, um it's just inevitable, we're going to find a city manager on their way up.
Yeah.
Or we're going to find one on the way down.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
We knew when we hired Aretha, she was on the way up.
Okay.
You know, but, but she was great, you know, uh, you know, worked with what we needed, went through COVID. You know, I, I just want to slide this in there real quick. We talked about our EDC, NBC.
Yeah.
You know, and TIPS and all that.
Yeah.
Many people don't realize that we've got a half a million dollars of that EDC money aside. And we went to all the businesses in Heath, some had just opened when COVID happened.
Wow.
We said, what do you need and what do you need it for?
Wow.
And we cut three checks, three different times cut those, and we didn't lose a single business during that. So that's one of those things that she, I'm a proud of the council, proud of the EDC, you know? So that's a real, some really good stuff happened. Well, no, we couldn't afford to keep her. Or at least, you know, for the, for the amount of money that it would have took to keep her, I don't think it would have been requisite of the job at hand. So we would have to do the same thing, either find someone who wants to maybe slow down a little bit or locate in our area. We do have a beautiful community.
You do, absolutely, yeah.
Or someone else who's in the up and coming and they're not seeing the growth in their area.
Right.
And, and they can come here. So, so that's, that's how I feel. I, I think we're, I think we're paying too much and we need to control.
Alright, very good. Well, now is your chance to tell voters why you're the best choice to be their representative on the city council and Rich Kraus, take it away.
We really appreciate this opportunity, you know, to speak to you and, and have you go through all this work and effort to, to make this happen. Um I'm running for city council because I, I truly care about my community. I've been here thirty years. I have kids here, I have grandkids here. I want to see it build out the way that the vision of the citizens has been thoroughly, thoroughly identified. I've been a volunteer, an unpaid volunteer uh for a very long time. I'm not sure you can volunteer too long, but you know? Uh I'm glad I survived the uh attempt to term limit me out with the retroactive term limits, that, that didn't work. Um I think you should really look hard at where my opponent's signs are. Being on developer's property or property for sale or property open and develop. Uh if they didn't think they were going to get some advantage from that, I don't think their signs would be there. Uh I want to continue to fight to make sure that, you know, we are financially responsible with our city and, and control your taxes and spending. I think that's very important. And um this, this city has been so good to me, which is why I am so passionate about serving the city. I have met so many of our wonderful citizens, serving the city, both on the council and the various boards, park board, you know, it's just been an amazing experience for me. No, I, I won't do it forever, but uh being the only incumbent running in this race, it's just not in me to cut and run, you know, I'm just not going to do that. I want to try to keep this ship running back in its right direction uh because it's not headed in the right direction. And I'm willing to fight for you, the citizen, you, the citizen, not for me, not for developers. And I totally respect our current citizens' property rights. So I need your vote to help serve you. So please vote Rich for place six.
Mitch Onby.
First off, I appreciate everyone tuning in to this broadcast and I greatly appreciate Bunker Bob for hosting this. And uh the venue is great and the uh format is excellent. And so I would, I would just say that I've got thirty years of predicting growth, of solving problems, of delivering uh plans and on promises. And uh I've worked with city councils and with commissioners court for that entire time. I know uh so many of those people, staff, uh for goodness sake, I know knew Dennis Bailey when he was a mayor, so it goes way back. And uh so I've seen all of those inner workings and what works the best and what doesn't. And I think that I'm the best to represent you in those situations. There are a lot of similarities between uh all of the candidates, but we essentially all want a very small uh metered, low-density growth. And we want the same kind of retail. And so to me, it comes down to about uh your ability to lead, your ability to come through on promises. And uh for all those reasons, I think I'm the best candidate. And uh it's time for some new ideas. It's time for change and I'd appreciate your vote.
Well, as you can tell, both candidates truly desire to earn your vote. If you have more questions of them or wish to know more about their campaigns, I posted links to their websites and or Facebook pages in the description of today's show. Now, early voting begins Monday, April twenty-second and goes through Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, with the election day on Saturday, May third. Now you're watching this because you want to be an informed voter, so be sure and share the link to this program with your friends and neighbors who can vote in this race. So until next time, I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen, looking forward to seeing you at the polls. Blessings.